Quorum of the.
All over.
Well, thanks, Don. Welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting in the Hammond Board Selectmen, August eighth, two thousand twenty-two. This meeting is being conducted in person and via Zoom. There is a quorum of the board in attendance tonight, and I as chair am attending remotely. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. All right, we're going to kick off the meeting with the first item on the agenda and scroll down there. Okay, first we have minutes. Review the minutes of June twenty-first.
I did make a revision to the ones that I sent you because I wasn't sure about the variance language. So those are in red in your folders. I think is it the twenty-first or the last set?
I think that's the last. The first one I see red as ambulance oversight.
Oh, that's just kind of a reminder about timing and whether or not.
Did we ever? I thought we would relate to them to send us the reports, and it's now been.
The month.
Yeah, June twenty-first, so a month, a month, a month from now.
So Bob, could you follow up on that?
Bob left.
He did.
Yeah, he stepped out for a second. I think other than that, I think a motion to approve June twenty-first minutes.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. The twenty-seventh.
Well, that's the various one.
Okay.
Now. Right. That was the old coach circle you're referring to, Craig?
Yeah, old coach and then five sixty-one main.
With that being properly filled in, I don't really see an issue with the minutes.
Motion to approve June twenty-seventh.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, thank you. As Bob returned.
Negative.
Okay, well, there were some comment on the early voting regulations. I thought we asked, is Eva there? And then we have Don. Don, I saw your email earlier about the timing.
Yeah, so Eva Eva was in, came in and she said that to scratch that off the agenda for tonight. Okay.
Let's follow up on, let's put it on the agenda for, so we're ahead of the game for November.
The next meeting she'll have the November ones.
Right. That special town meeting. Bob, did you have a chance to reach out to Doug and Carol?
I did. I sent an email message pointing out that we had this as an agenda item and that any, I sent it to the entire advisory committee. They had any comments either to send them to me or to come into the meeting.
Do we need it? Do we need a special town being this year?
Well, we have free, we have free cash to take care of, and we have a couple of warrant, a couple of appropriations that are probably going to need a little extra funding.
Isn't there a couple CPA articles too, possibly?
Possibly, yeah, yeah. So typical date would be at the end of October. However, the last Monday in October this year is the thirty-first. And we, we don't want to give. How do you all feel with the twenty-fourth? I think with the, really as Don pointed out, the low need for any appropriations, whatever, really, this is financial. This is take care of free cash, set the tax rate, things like that. We don't, we don't anticipate, I don't anticipate a lot of warrant articles coming forward. I haven't heard anything. So I would think we don't need a lot of time to get this prepped up. And the more time we give the assessors to get the tax rate set, the better it is for them. Would you guys be okay with the twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth sounds like it works.
Yeah.
Okay, so then typically, let's set the date for October twenty-fourth for the special town meeting. And then Pam and Bob will send the normal letter out to different departments informing of this. And if there is an emergency request, and I stress the word emergency, that wasn't anticipated before the annual town meeting, share that with us. But other than that, we're looking for purely financial things, and this goes back to Cliff, Dick, et cetera, the assessors and the advisory for recommendation for financial and then a balance either against the tax rate into stabilization or a combination of the two. Does the board agree with that?
All good.
Same as always, really. Okay. Shared conservation agent.
And John, before I forget, in the minutes when we were talking about ambulance oversight, you just got to reach back out and look for the reporting. Okay, because we haven't got anything still. Right, sorry, John.
I gave you copies of the proposed intermunicipal agreement with the three towns, among the three towns. In checking today, the advice is not to vote on it at this point. There may be one or two more minor or stylistic changes. So you've got the essence of what we're going to propose, but we can hold off on the voting on that for a while.
Okay, when we do vote on it, I would appreciate probably the co-chairs, the Conservation Commission to come and attend our meeting. They really would like their input on this, you know, because it really directly affects them. I don't want them to think we're usurping their authority.
Oh, no, I'm keeping them up to date on what we're doing.
I think everybody would like to know in attendance. Hey, we're all working together here.
Well, we certainly will make sure that they're invited, and so far they seem to be pleased that we're doing this because they need the technical assistance.
Exactly. Okay, now we come right down to, so we'll put that on for further. Do you have a sense of that, Bob? I mean, two weeks, four weeks?
Probably two weeks. Hold up is not the town of Hammond. The holdup is one of the other towns where the selectmen want a little more time to do a review and they may propose some changes. So as far as changes, just some clarification that I'd like to see in eight dot four, where they're talking about the host community is going to approve the budget.
Right.
And the member communities approve their designated contribution. Who sets the budget and who sets the contribution fees? So I'm just curious, you know, what are we going to be on the hook for?
And also on that one, that's eight point four, it says that the host community must approve the budget and all member community. Does that mean town meeting has to prove it? Or all municipalities must approve their designated fee contribution to be paid to the host agency? So.
I, I think that the anticipation is that it would go to town meeting as part of the town's budget. But as, as far as approval of the proposed budget, that would be something agreed to by the, by the respective towns.
So our contribution fee would be.
Correct.
And we have money there already, you know, we have some kind of money there.
We haven't, yeah, we did not delete money from those accounts.
All right. That may be something that might even come up at the special.
Possibly, but Bob, you're feeling that we have funding currently available for, and honestly, it's a partial year for this year as well, whenever we start this. Are they saying that when we agree to it, it's going to kick right along? Or are they thinking maybe effective January first, like a six-month thing for the first?
The sense I have is that once we get three select boards to adopt it, they're going to get right, right into it. And the fact that there might even be a candidate available.
And it's going to work the same as the shared.
It'll work the same, the same as the shared health. We will have, there will be one conservation agent who serves the three towns. We would basically do this contract that would specify the number of hours that the town would receive and what the assessment would be.
You know, John, in section twelve of that, it says, to your question, I think it says, the current municipalities will develop a transition plan. The transition plan should be completed on or before December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two.
No, I think it's similar, Don, to what we had done before, where it really started halfway through the year. We kicked it, you know, so just to make it accounting-wise. But it does set a timetable. What's the right way to do? Yeah.
That could be the way it plays out, although I think the availability of an agent may result in the three towns trying to move up the dates, so.
All right, is Mark there?
Yeah.
Great. So Bob, it's now you, the grantmeister, has the floor. New title on your door, I believe.
The governor did sign the government bond, which means that the monies that we requested in the, in the state budget, in the state that government bond to replace the windows on the upper floor of Town Hall is funded. Five hundred and forty thousand dollars. I have not been able to verify that the governor has signed the transportation bond. The sense is from, I sent you, I think, a message from Senator Lesser's staff person that they're confident that the earmark that was put in for Hammond will in fact stay and be signed, which would then provide funding of one point three million dollars to design as well as to construct an ADA compliant sidewalk along Main Street. It would mean completing the sidewalk from where it ends down to Summers Road. And it would mean improving the existing blacktop sidewalk, making it ADA compliant and presumably making it out of concrete. I mean, I think those are the outlines, and we're probably going to have to do some tweaking of that and maybe make some changes even. But that's what.
Was that on both sides, Bob, replacing the blacktop on north and south side?
One side, just one side.
Just one side replaced, oh, not replacing the other side?
No. You have a, you have an agreement. Well, I mean, that's something that maybe we, we can look at. The language that I read in the transportation bond doesn't say just one side. We could do both sides. We have a proposal from Ty and Bond to do the design. It seems, I think some of us thought it was a little expensive. That may be something that you want to look into further, or I could look into it further and see if the price there was inflexible or whether there could be some, be some changes in, in the design package. If you recall, the sidewalk that was designed for Allen and Summers Road from the senior center down to the, you know, the Centennial Commons, that was twenty-one thousand dollars. Now, this proposal is much more expensive, certainly far more involved and much longer length. But you have it, you have it in your package there, so if you want to vote that tonight, fine. If you don't, if you want me to talk to them more, particularly if you want, if you want to talk about also replacing the existing blacktop on the, on the north side.
I, I think as long as we do one side to make it ADA compliant, I don't think we need to totally dig up the other side and redo the other side if it's, if it's feasible. I think their, their scope here was, like you said, Bob, do the whole one side, whichever side it would be, but I would assume it'd be the south side.
South side, yeah.
All the way down. So I'm looking at the proposal here.
Yeah, I do, I do see the Ty and Bond document there. They gave us the, it's the estimate for their engineering work. Looking for the, the cost of one point three. Where, where'd that come from?
When I had the call from Senator Lesser's office.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. See, in the, in the document, the OneDrive from the sidewalk proposal, it shows the fee from Ty and Bond for the engineering part. I'm looking for the, the estimate of the one point three.
That was an estimate that was given to me by Ty and Bond when Senator Lesser called and said, you have a request. I didn't put that into the OneDrive. I can dig it out and put that in there. But what we have on the agenda tonight is only the design part of that, so.
I don't know, I just think that, I think it's been the hundred and eighty-three thousand bucks is a little steep.
It is.
For what they do.
It is.
And I don't, we don't have a rush on this because by the time the state goes out with the bond and everything else.
Right.
Period of time. I think we should, we need to talk to them about that. And I don't, there's a couple of things like, well, exclusions, you know, they're not going to be responsible for easements or land acquisitions. They're not going to be responsible for environmental notifications. They're not going to be responsible for a geotechnical evaluation. You know, and even on their, their, their work, they say that they're going to oversee the construction, but they're not going to make any, where is it there? Get the right thing here. Bid administration, general contract review, okay. I mean, attend, attend a pre-construction conference, attend a week, bi-weekly meeting, review shop drawings, review contractor payment requisitions. I mean, and then they say here that they're not going to be responsible for really seeing if you're doing the job right or not.
Well, I don't know if I read that way, but the one thing that does concern me, and I think you hit on it, Don, a bit, is the part, and we're all familiar with the area, the part between the VFW and the corner of the river across from Garage Park. To me, that's the most sensitive part there because it's the closest to the river. And I think whatever engineering firm we use, they would have to be really on top of that part. Working with Concom, working with DEP, it may even require the Army Corps of Engineer, for all I know. So whatever firm gets it has to be responsible for that part there, filling, you know, filing all the appropriate forms. I think that's kind of what Don's alluding to there. You know, if we're giving you a contract, we want you to handle it soup to nuts. Now, we got to go out and find somebody else to handle the rest of it.
Well, I haven't done any discussions or negotiation with Ty and Bond. If you want to delay this, as Don pointed out, we have plenty of time. The state bond isn't even signed yet, so we can't make any commitments on that other than with town funds. And secondly, by the time the money is going through the channels and arrives here, it's likely to be early next year. And so this is not, this is not a project for this construction season. It's something for next season.
This is what I'm talking about. She'll be, this is what I'm talking, they say. It says, it says, in general, I don't know if it's standard or not, but in general, if the work is proceeding in accordance with the contract document, based upon this general observation, Ty and Bond will keep the town informed about the progress of the work, which we drive down Main Street every day. I can tell you how it's going. It will endeavor to guard the town against deficiencies in work. Ty and Bond will not supervise or have control over the contractor's work, nor have any responsibility for the contractor's safety precautions or programs. I mean, maybe standard, I don't know.
Yeah.
Like for a hundred and eighty-seven thousand bucks.
I, I kind of like the model we used or was used for the Scantic water extension, where they were very much involved with the project, construction itself.
Well, the whole thing here, we have such an amount here, we may be looking at a bidding process here for both engineering and the project. So I think we have a scope of, a scope here, which, thank you, they've identified. That's great. Now we go off for an RFQ. Maybe they win it, maybe they don't. You know, like you said, Bob, you've had difficulty getting other firms to bid on different things. It's unfortunately, it's a, what do you want to call it, seller's market out there, a buyer's market, whichever.
I think we're in a situation where the engineering firms have a lot of work to do. And when you go out and ask them a quote, they give you a high quote. If you take it, fine. If not, well, they got plenty of other work.
Right, we saw that, this is like Bob said, on the water project, you know, those people really weren't interested in getting the thing. They didn't sharpen their pencil, except for the local guy who had a gap, and it worked out for the town. That also, I think, goes into your next thing there, Bob, about the, the window thing. I mean, you look at that amount there, and we're talking, I don't know, seventeen, eighteen thousand dollars a window. And I don't think they're staying glass, you know.
I thought they were doing a stain glass of each of us, you know.
Ballproof done, is that what you said?
Process was, I was asked for by Senator Lesser's office if we wanted something into the bond. I said yes. He said, give us an estimate for, from a consulting firm. I called several. Frankly, Ty and Bond were the only ones who expressed any interest. I even called one in Springfield that I know very well, and they, they didn't respond. And so that's the estimate that they provided. Clearly, these windows would have to be re, and we were talking about replacing these windows with the same type of windows, custom-made windows. But if the point is, we need to bring that under some control as well or bid it out, I agree, you know.
But again, same thing you were trying to, you're responding to the library. They've got a drafty issue. I understand that. It's obviously comfort from people up there, plus an energy thing as well. But investigate, is there another option? Take care of it. And we have a town hall that's going, I believe Connie has plans for a ceremony for the anniversary. We've also applied for CPA funds for the town hall as a historic building. How does that play into any repair or replacement of the windows? And that may be something, may want to kick it off to the historical commission and see what, and get their input in it as well.
I've already received communication from the Historic Commission.
I'm sure.
The message was, don't replace the windows. I think the, the commission may think that we're going to replace them with modern vinyl windows. Whereas what I asked the consultant for was an estimate for replacing the windows with custom-made windows like the ones that are currently there, not something produced on an assembly line.
I still have the windows without knowing our building accessibility study of this building. You know, spending all that money that we're going to get from an earmark, and then we find out there's more to this building that requires a lot more money, you know. They, I know that Ty and Bond promised, and actually, they've been here once. They've been here once to undertake the feasibility, the, the accessibility study and the capital needs study of the building. So I know that that's going to go forward. I would just have a hard time spending that money on the windows before they finish that study.
There again, I don't know that this is something, given the way the wheels turn in Boston, going to get done this construction season. So I don't know that we're under any, any pressure at this point.
That is, that is a question, Bob, for, is there any expiration on this money? I mean, I hate to think like some of the other ones where it must be encumbered by a certain date. That would be a thing to find out.
We, I don't have that yet, but when the state sends out a contract, if they're going to oppose a deadline, that'll be in the contract, so.
Great.
So Main Street sidewalk, we're going to put a pin in it until we find out if we get the transportation bond bill, then revisit the engineering costs and possible expansion.
And the key thing is, let's go back to, again, as Bob said before about the, you know, them sending the money back. That's a big number for the town to be sitting out there for, waiting for the state to reimburse us. This isn't like, you know, the twenty-three thousand for the gambling bill, almost, or what, three hundred thousand for the municipal vulnerability project that we haven't gotten back yet. I would hate to see the town spend this kind of money, waiting, waiting for the state to send their money back.
The other one is, that I sent you was the crosswalk, where I also think that the estimate is, well, it's a very involved project, but it's also, I think, higher than it should be.
Well, which crosswalk, what crosswalk?
The crosswalk that we have designed for Centennial Commons, crossing over to Gary's Market.
I've talked to, I attended the Housing Authority meeting last week, and they're kind of united in the fact they don't want anything different at the crosswalk. They want the signage there, they want the, on either side, pressing the button. They want a control further down the street to alert people coming from Connecticut that, you know, there's a blinker going on. But they don't see a need for changing out the current crosswalk that we have. To be honest, there are two white lines. They show the path going across. They're all about the warning system down the street to make sure traffic coming from Connecticut slows down. They're not really concerned with any other changes. They crossed there now, fine. They would just like a safety device in place, which is what Mark is going to provide.
Those are ordered, and the latest word from the highway superintendent is that they're due in on the fifteenth of this month. The safety signs.
Right. So anyhow, just I'm saying, in my opinion, I really don't think we need any real additional work at the crosswalk. That, honestly, the highway department couldn't handle if it's changing out the curbing or something like that. They'd handle it as part of their normal duties. I don't know if Craig or Don has been down there and take a look, and, but if you drive and you see people, they're just go right across the street there. They have no difficulty just crossing over to Gary's.
They're just like, like some safe. Crosses over and it just ends into the parking lot at Gary's. There's like no real sidewalk over into the parking lot. And then there's a parking lot. There's no, no aggress into a parking lot.
Right, and there's no, no opportunity for that either, really.
Well, that brings up the other sidewalk proposal for which we do not have funding. That's the one that has been designed that would reach down to the crosswalk there at Gary's. It hasn't been, it has not been funded. What I can tell you is that in talking with the gaming commission, they have offered to fund that as well as a design project if the town wants to go forward for the intersection there at East Long Meadow, Wilbraham and Summers.
Well, certainly don't want a road that ends nowhere. But again, in conversation at the housing meeting, they're telling me, when they talk to their members, they might have two people that would want to use that sidewalk down to the senior center, and that's it, you know. So again, are we building something, a ballpark? Hopefully somebody will attend. So maybe this is a project that was something we thought about doing, but there's really not a lot of, not a lot of interest in it.
How do we know there's not a lot of interest? I mean, if we put a sidewalk in there, it goes right through our business district. Why would that not encourage people to walk more, whether or not it's people from Centennial Commons or people coming elsewhere, you know? That's, that's a pretty busy area there. I walked that went from the Centennial or Shell or Gary's all the way down to the senior center. If there's money in the casino mitigation fund and they're willing to spend money on us, we have this proposal. I don't see it as a bad thing to kind of move forward with that. You know, when we're increasing the mobility through the business district, you're going right by restaurants, shops, businesses, you know. People can park in the parking lot and continue up and down the street, you know. It will promote active lifestyles, and then you get more people just pedaling through the town there. You know, maybe it's joggers, walkers, or, you know. You know, maybe it's joggers, walkers, or, you know, business opportunity for people to travel from one establishment to the next. I don't see any of that, yeah.
Well, I think, like I said, the, the original thought was because the seniors at the Housing Authority would want to get there. Your point, Craig, is a valid point. Maybe we need to be thinking bigger about who the people are that are using this.
I think if we go back to that Main Street, if we, if we continue that Main Street sidewalk, if we get that transportation bond bill, that would go all the way from here, all the way down to Summers Road. And then if we already had that existing sidewalk from Summers down through the business district to the senior center or the churches that are down there, I mean, all we're doing is establishing more foot traffic for people to utilize. I think it's one of those instances, you know, if you build it, people will come.
Could be. But it also leads in, it also leads into, we're talking, I'm going through the intersection, and again, that's another project that's on Bob's radar. Do we do something with that intersection?
Well, I think if the casino mitigation wants to spend money, and we have these ideas, you know, it would be in our best interest to allow them to design a proposal and give it back to us for the intersection, as well as, you know, have them fund the sidewalk project. If we don't use it, somebody else is going to use it, so might as well take advantage of it while we can.
If they say no, they say no.
They say no, they say no.
Now, they don't do the design, Bob, they just approve the request for funding, right?
We would have to get an estimate, or get several estimates for the cost of construction, because the design has already been done, although there are two designs, as you and I know, because when we walked at that time, we had two options for design. Nevertheless, it's been done. And what we would have to do is get an estimate, a cost estimate for construction. I think the last estimate was three forty-one. Submit it to them, and then they would make a decision on funding. What I was told on the telephone is that they are not only interested in providing funding, that they've done a fair amount of it. Apparently, the revenues from the casinos are galloping in, and, and they've got money to spend, and they would just assume doling out to the communities in the regions where there are casinos, than have it just scooped up for general revenue by the state. So. Well, the process would be, if we wanted to go forward, would be, get some bids in addition to the one that I have, submit it to them, let them go through their approval process. This is probably talking into the fall, and then maybe even early into the, the next calendar year. And then, if approved, go ahead with construction next year. So. I do know that their funding round is coming up this fall, in September, another funding round, so.
Bob, let me ask you this. Of the original hundred thousand we had, how much do we have encumbered? I mean, we spent some on the sign, and then Bob, Mark has ordered the, the crossing stuff for, I don't know, eight or nine thousand, something like that.
We're, we're in the range of thirty to thirty-one thousand of the hundred.
Like over or spent?
Around seventy, sixty-nine or seventy thousand remaining. That is unallocated. And which would be available for projects either on Summers Road and Allen Street, or on Main Street.
Well, I think it also could go to, like Craig said, we really should need, find out what people want. And we could use some of this money to really go out in the field, or get somebody to do it for us, or really find a way to poll the community. What do you think is a good use of this money? Even if it's, even if it's free money, it's not always free. You know, and a bit of the danger is, and Don may back me up on this, is the state has a certain history when they give out money. And if you get money for a project, you may go to the bottom of the list next time you're looking for money. So we have to be prudent when we ask for, for earmarks or stuff like that, that they're really something we need. You know, we hate to get a million dollars for this, and then when we need money for a bridge, I'm sorry, you got a million dollars last year, you can't have another million till your turn comes up again. So I think it'd be important, maybe we use some of this money, Craig is right on with saying, we need to do what he wants, not what we want.
Yeah, I have a hard time believing that down the road, the state's going to be giving out as much money as they are now. So, I mean, we've never seen this before. We may never see this again.
Well, the other, the other issue too, I think we have to consider is, is it going to be a change in administration? Yep. Make a change, and so it's going to take those people a few months to get up to speed on what's going on. So that made the layout process, which is, if we can act now, or at least get something in that, get something in there.
Yeah, I think Craig's right. A lot of this is federal money. I mean, the spigots are open right now, but they're going to close. And, and money will be tighter for all sorts of private.
And I think as, as well as that casino mitigation fund, is it has to be used in the main arteries. So we couldn't, for say, do it, you know, outside of this, you know, business district. You know, we, we got the, the approval for the lights, because it's right there on the traffic, you know, people using Hampton as a cut through. So if we use the, the money from the casino fund, we have to use it within these areas. We do. That would be high-traffic, cut-through areas.
Well, that's, that's what, that's what you're talking about. The, you're looking for a sense of people, do they want that sidewalk going down Summers Road slash whatever? That was the traffic pattern that we appeared before the Gaming Commission showing them. So it is relevant to that, you're right.
You're going to have to show that there is some connection with increased traffic heading downtown to the casino. We don't have that much of an impact, but presumably there's some, so that's why they allocated the first hundred thousand.
I'd like to authorize Bob to investigate this more with the casino mitigation fund, seeing what we need, and if we are able to secure those funds, and, you know, what other options we would have there, you know, sidewalk, you know, if there's other opportunities to.
Okay. And I'd be reporting back on this probably September, mid-September, because that's, that's when they're going to open up another round, or it might even be later than that, but.
Or ducks and roll before then, yeah, early bird gets the worm.
Okay, thank you, Bob.
Ducks eat worms. You never know, I haven't received one, I got a mixed analogy there.
Bob, Bob, any more grants, special money, anything, you know?
I could tell you, there's some other things that are in the hopper right now. We did receive a message from the Commission on Disabilities in Boston that they have a grant round opening up today that would provide the so-called planning grants that we've talked about to basically make a town-wide plan for accessibility. Much of that has already been done. But reality is that before they will give you an action grant, so-called, to do something, you've got to have a planning grant that they are satisfied with, and one up-to-date. So that's why we talked originally about updating the 2017 plan. And I would think that getting the planning grant is the next step. I've talked with senior center director about this, and she's going to convene the ADA committee locally, and we're going to discuss it with them, and solicit some of their support and involvement, because it's a fairly complicated, fairly complicated application. And they do require a number of policies to be in place. And certainly, we have to post some forms of non-discrimination and so forth that we don't currently have posted. So it's going to take a little work, and we're going to start working on that, I think, next Monday. In addition to that, there's a community compact round coming up for IT. And I'll give you more information about that when the time comes. There's also money in the federal infrastructure legislation for fiber optic programs. And I'm going to be applying for some of that money so that we could continue what we're doing, and will be doing.
Is that the middle mile, or is that, is that middle mile or something else?
I don't know yet. I just know that it's there, and that a, a grant round is about ready to open up. And the Cultural Council, the Massachusetts Cultural Council has just opened a round, as I've shared with Pam, that she'll share with the council, to talk about what might be done there. One of the selectmen has offered something new involving hiking trails. We also can look for some, maybe some support for sprucing up Academy Hall, making some changes over there that are clearly necessary, needed. So we'll be applying for that as well, so.
I would think that CPA might be available for the hiking things. I mean, we've had a banner year of income for them, and really, not much requests, not many requests for it, so.
So those are the things that are coming soon, and I'll keep the board informed.
Okay, so if that's all the money you've got, Bob, is that it?
That's it for now, yes.
Well, we'll see when two weeks bring. Thank you. So do we have our firefighter candidate there?
Thank you for seeing us tonight. Tonight, I come forward to the board with a probationary firefighter application. This is Julia Noel. She has turned in an application to join the Call Fire Department, which she would be appointed tonight, or agreed upon, to become a probationary firefighter until she gets her training, and after one year of meeting, and see if she moves up in ranks or not. Appointed tonight, she'll be eligible for some training as that Mass Call Volunteer Academy free of charge from the state, as I mentioned in previous meetings with the board. She'll have other training available to her as well.
All right, Chief, I don't see information in the OneDrive, so I'm going to defer to Craig or Don, if they have something in front of them.
She's a, she grew up in Hammond, she's a Minutog High School graduate. She currently works at a food service industry here in town. She's very active in high school, she took a lot of AP courses. She seems like a, a good candidate for the fire department to take in.
Julia, why do you, why do you have interest in joining the fire department?
I've been really interested in, like, law enforcement and fire for a long time. And then after COVID, I found myself still in town, not like away at school, and, um.
Trapped?
Trapped. But it happened for a reason, and I've been interested in it for a long time, and I love Hammond, and I grew up here, with TWV, Minutog, and just like, I like helping people, I feel like helping my community would be a great thing for me.
So Chief, what's the process again, probationary?
Yeah, so probationary firefighter, we train in-house. She has to meet certain criteria before she's allowed, you know? They're not allowed in structural fires or anything like that. And once she makes her requirement, if she chooses to go to the academy, she can, as long as she's in good standings with the department.
Do we still pay for that? Do we, is there a fee for that, or we?
Well, we do pay because the state, you know, it's a state-funded thing, but the town does not pay for. We have to supply her with a few things, like a fit test for the SEBA mask, and some gear to go, some turnout gear to go. And, you know, we're required to supply that for anybody that attends the academy. But we usually hold on, when we swap out gear throughout the year, we'll save some for the academy. And that way, we're not buying, you know, additional gear.
What was your favorite course?
History.
History.
I'll be other questions, so I mean, with that, I'd like to move with the board, appoint Julia Noel to the role of probationary firefighter, based on Chief Poole's recommendation and under his jurisdiction.
Second?
All those in favor? Hi. Julia, welcome. Congratulations.
You're volunteering.
How are we doing on volunteers? Do we, we still have room for more, or are you looking?
I think I'll have one more for you next meeting, the twenty-second. So it's comes and goes.
Right.
You know, we have a C A for a month, then we get three or four, so it all depends. We're still looking for people in town, so we keep our response time down.
Congratulations.
Nice to meet you.
You too.
All right. Next, I go back to the agenda.
Oh, wait, superintendent.
Correct. Mark, come on up.
What's up, Mark? Good evening.
Mark, I see they gave you five, or ten minutes to talk about all the projects you have. I hope you can speak rap and fire, because you have a lot in front of you right now.
I will, I will try.
No, you don't have to. So, can you first start off? So projects left over from last year. What is what? Was it just North Road, right?
Correct.
Okay. And the, and the park?
Yes, and the drain, and the drainage at the park, correct. We do have all the materials for it now.
All right. Got your excavator in, so how are we doing with bidding out your current list at this point?
Okay, so the, the road projects for, for this year had been bid out a couple of months ago.
Awarded the Palmer.
That award went to Palmer Paving for seven hundred forty-nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty-three cents. Was able to get the contract signed by both parties last, last week. And I was given some timeframe. They're looking to begin milling roads September twenty-eighth. Followed by paving those roads that were milled on October sixth.
How does that look getting into the fall? Are we, are we getting to the cold weather? Will they get set back at all?
We're still good, we're still good there, yeah. Well, I'm comfortable with, with those, with those dates.
Sometimes they get pushed off. I think it was last year we got spread out a couple of extra weeks.
Yeah, we did it last year, the, yes, it was last year.
It was last year. That's why we didn't finish North Road. Exactly like Craig said, we got spread back so far, we couldn't finish it. So, I mean, you had an aggressive thing with all the money the state, the feds have given us. We have an aggressive plan, but it's fully funded. And you're going to take care of a lot of needs that the board has looked at over the past few years, so.
I'm going to stay in close contact with them. Because, you know, like, October and early October could turn into, you know, late October, you know? It could be getting to a first freeze. I don't know if it affects anything, but.
Yeah, they can, they could probably, with a mill and pave, you know, I'd say up to the end of October. I wouldn't be getting, I wouldn't be very comfortable anything after that. Originally, it was supposed to be the end of August, beginning of September. That got pushed back, but now we have a signed contract, and we've got some, some dates that, that we can fall back on, and I will be in close contact with them, because like you said, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want that to
Right.
migrate into late October either. Things are still, you know, kind of crazy out there as far as getting contractors in the work. Everybody seems to be really busy. Supply, supply issues are still present, so. But I will stay on top of them for sure on that.
So what, what's the biggest need going forward for the highway department, Mark? Obviously, you have the building coming to completion this month.
Well, we cut the ribbon on that.
Yeah. We had a site meeting this morning, and everything is, is looking on track for August nineteenth. The, I mean, the place has been bustling with activity. The plumbers are, are there running the plumbing and gas lines, and the electrician's been there. So we're, we're on schedule. There's, there, again, there's, because of delivery issues, there's a couple of small components to, oh. They're like parts to the, to devices that are. Oh, they're like parts to the, to devices that are not sure yet on the delivery timeframe on, on those. Still in storage tank or somewhere? Could be, could be, but they're small parts. But the overall, everything, the building and everything else is coming along nicely.
Okay. One thing I did discuss with Mark and this is, Mark, you currently have a, an old security system up there, an old ADT control panel. I'm not even sure it's active. I think it's something that the board should consider upgrading the security system at the highway department building. Right now, we currently use, Pam helping out, is it well-designed Sebola Place?
Well, well-designed is Academy Hall.
Yeah, yeah. So I think it'd be prudent for the town to get a, a quote on upgrading security there now that we have extra doors, things like that. Probably be a cost associated with it, but bring it back maybe for the fall town meeting as kind of an emergency thing. We need, got a lot of money invested there. It'd be prudent to protect it.
John, I did ask Jane about that she might have. She brought out a proposal from 2017. And I've asked her to get it updated.
Right. I'd review, I brought, I brought this over up to Bob and Jane earlier. So they have the rapport with those people. So just a potential thing for perhaps fall town meeting if there's a cost associated with it. All right, Mark, what's next, Mark? Oh, let's talk about bridges, Mark.
I just had a quick question about the security system. Is that something I, I'm going to be soliciting prices for? Or is that something I'll work with Bob and Jane on?
I work with, I'd ask Jane to go out and get some prices since she had been involved originally.
Okay. Okay. Uh, and yes, so bridges.
Like that Eagles song, Seven Bridges, yeah.
So we've got three bridges in town that we're, we're looking at potential projects on. One is Rocket Dundee Road Bridge. That the state generously offered to pay for replacement or repair. John, Bob and myself attended a pre-scoping meeting a few weeks ago.
Virtually.
Yep, virtually. And, and I don't think any of us really walked away with, with any, any real answers on, on that project. They hadn't even decided if it was going to be a replacement or a repair. There's a possibility for a repair, which would of course be easier and easier. You know, we talked about, you know, traffic, traffic detours and, and other things, but at the end of the meeting, and I don't know if I'm the only one, but I, I walked away not really having any, any more information on that project. I, you know, I do know that they, they want to bid that, they want to bid that project for whatever they do, whether it's a replacement or a repair. They want to bid that in sometime in 23 before the construction to take place in 24. So I think the way we left it was is they were going to reach back out to us after, after they kind of consulted with each other and, and looked into a repair.
The way I understand it is we have no say in any of this process anyway, right? The state's going to do the bidding, the architectural and the engineering and all the work, right? They're the ones that are overseeing everything.
Yeah.
So it's pretty much however they choose to go forward.
Well, there's still going to be local involvement. We still got to get Concom involved, probably again Corps of Engineers. You know, that, that's going to be a thing, but really Mark's whole point is that they came into this meeting and they didn't have a game plan. You know, they got 10 people from this consultant place, right, Mark? And they hadn't even, and they hadn't even decided if they're going to repair or build a new bridge yet.
We had 15 in the meeting because I counted them.
Right, but I mean, 10 were from one company, you know, the, you know, they weren't even on the hook yet. Just it's, it was shocking. We get halfway through the meeting and the guy says, well, we might repair it and like, you were just talking about building a new bridge and now you say it can be repaired? Why are we here? But that's the new norm, I guess.
We have news on South Road too, something different.
That's correct. Yep. So South Road Bridge was approved for a small bridge grant. For the phase, for phase one, phase one of the grant, which is design and engineering. So the town was approved up to $100,000 for the design and engineering for the repair replacement of South Road Bridge, which is also in, in decline. It appears now, I, and I forwarded the email I got from the state last week. It appears that we, we are assigned a consultant or, or a, a design, a bridge design firm, which happens to be.
VHB, isn't it?
VHB, which I had never worked with them.
No.
They're out of, they've got offices all over the place, but the closest one here is Springfield.
Van Ness hanging. I was surprised. I was as surprised as anybody.
Russland.
They, they originally sent out a list of the firms and I thought they were saying choose one.
Out of the seven on approval letter, yes.
We got another message saying, here's your firm.
Right.
So I'm awaiting contact from VHB to begin that process. And once, once that process is complete, goes back to the state for phase two, which would be construction. To include the state. Now I believe that's a reimbursement program on the, on the, on the small bridge grant. I'll have to double check. But at any rate, the state will pay up to, I believe it's 500,000.
Now, just go back a little history on this. They, they came in and said they feel that bridge, it needs repair, needs replacement. So they're, they go around and do inspection of the various bridges we have and we have quite a few of them.
That's correct.
So it wasn't something we went out and asked for. They, just like with Rocket Dundee.
That's correct.
All right. And now the bridge that we did have an issue with and Bob's been working on. And this isn't, this isn't one the state is trying to throw money at a certain place, the one we want to get done.
Yeah, this one is a little too wide for the small bridge program. They did give us 30,000, as you recall, to get a design done. What I looked at when I saw the design and the photographs, there's significant deterioration and spalling of the concrete. And we're now looking around for funding. Has given me someone to talk with at District Two. I haven't done yet, but I, it's on my agenda for this week to see if it will come across with the, the funding required. It might be a couple of million dollars to replace the bridge. It's not dangerous now, so we don't want to excite people about that. But it would make sense to move forward with the replacement. It's an old bridge and the town is not going to come up with the funding to do this at that, at that level, I think. So.
I bet it's not on the casino route. What's next, Mark? Or anything else to try and keep you busy? I mean, I mean, you do have, well, so you have one member retiring in October. Tell us, you've got plans for a new?
Longtime member, employee who is retiring in October. We've gone ahead and posted the position in the local publication and would like to, I'll have the, the funding in my department payroll account to bring somebody on a little bit, about a month early. Actually, maybe like this, the beginning of September. I was thinking.
You posted, you have somebody interested?
I've got, I've got a couple applicants.
Okay.
Yeah. So I was going to do some interviews in the next week or two, make a decision and I can't see that.
Remember the press wants to know the name of the employee who was retiring.
Oh, his name's Matthew Frederick.
So whoever you retire, you're going to have an opportunity to overlap a little bit and get some training with the retired member, which is good. All right.
You think a month is good?
I do, I do. And the help will be much appreciated.
Is Matt willing to stay on and be one of the winter drivers, do you know, or?
He, he is and, you know, I'm going to sit down and figure out our, our plow routes and, and everything and and see how we can work that out. I'd be, you know, I'd like to have him stay on board. Been doing it a number of years and is, is very good at it. So.
Okay, good.
Another, one other quick announcement too is I did meet with our new Handen Wilbraham Regional School District Superintendent last week. Dr. Groboz. And we sat down for a few minutes and just went over winter operations and how, how we've done them in the past, how I, with Al Ganem and so, so that was good to be able to sit down and, and get that ironed out. I will be his point of contact for, for Handen. And the point of contact in Wilbraham is, is actually the police chief. So.
All right. Does the board have anything else for Mark?
Clerical help.
Right. So Don has volunteered to be your clerical help. That's why he brought it up. Thank you, Don.
He'll need training.
He works half an hour, but he works cheap. Okay. So this is, yeah, this is something I asked to have brought on because again, with everything that's going out with Mark and all this, I really think, and our discussion at the next meeting, which is stormwater. I really think this set the point where the department has grown so much that we need to delegate some of the things he's doing to some clerical. And I don't know if the board's looking at six hours, 10 hours, 15 hours, but I think it's a discussion that needs to happen now. And if it's something that requires minimal funding or some funding, you know, we can address it this year. So I opened it up there. Mark, is this first off something you're interested in?
It is. This is, this is an idea I've been kicking around for the last couple of, couple of years. In fact, I did in, in one of my, I forget which year, but in one of the budget submittals, I had put some money in there to, to fund, but then I, I never ended up, you know, I never ended up using it. To fund some, some clerical help. I guess my, my thing is, is I have to sit down and, and come up with a.
A list of your paperwork.
A list of, yeah, of responsibilities and, yeah, yes. Which I haven't had a, a chance to do. I, again, the help would be greatly appreciated. I just have to sit down and, and put some thought into it, but some more thought into it, I should say. I haven't been thinking about, but. And it's just, you know, I just go ahead and, and do this.
I, I have to say, John, that I've already kind of, kind of applied for the job because when I walk my son's dog, I check the storm drains along the way and I call up Mark and tell him which ones need to be unplugged. Right?
You're the man, Don. But again, I think first off, I would work with, with Bob, Pam, et cetera. Look at the, let's find a job description first. Let's get a list of tasks that you think is there. And then make sure it's something that, you know, fits into what we already have. You know, for, I don't think we're at an admin assistant type level, but really clerical. It really is clerical. You know, you get a lot of paperwork, vendor paperwork, stuff like that, just to be filed. Bringing things over to the town hall and dropping them off. And I mean, that takes a lot of time out of your day. When you could be out there working with Don on catch bases, you know, it's really.
I think it's a great idea. I just. The time to sit down and, and do it. So I have to just make some time.
Okay.
Have a, I do have a template job description, job description. When, when I had thought about this previously, I had reached out to a counterpart in a neighboring town. And I was provided with a job description that they used. We can look at that and see if it matches up, how it matches up.
Great. Okay. All right, well. Anymore? Mark?
No, I think that's it. That's it for tonight. And then.
Oh, no, no. One more thing. What's the word on the truck?
There isn't any word right now. I'm disappointed to say. My contact, my, the salesman that I had dealt with abruptly retired. And when I finally got the new contact for our area's sales rep, I am not getting any phone calls back for like the last four weeks.
That sounds promising.
I haven't gotten any bad news and before the older salesman retired, he said, you know, your truck, your truck didn't get, the order didn't get canceled where he said it's still on, it's, the order is still in there. He said, a lot of towns, they're getting their trucks, the orders canceled from, from Ford. And then other towns I talked to, there's, there's places they're not even taking, they won't even talk to them. They won't even take an order for, for these sized trucks. So I'm going to keep trying to the point where I come back to the board and, and ask if we waited out. I, I just, hopefully I could get some more information. I'd like to, if, if it wasn't an hour and a half away, away, I, I drive there. Maybe, in fact, maybe, maybe I will. I mean, at some point, just show up by their doorstep and.
Well, one, well, one thing, one thing, Mark, is that we did take that truck. We did put it on the plan a year early. Because the plan was to take the old truck and turn it over to Parks. So it wasn't like we were desperate to get that truck replaced for your purposes per se. So fortunately, the highway department is not being affected by the delay. Parks were affected a little bit because they didn't get the use of the hand me down, so to speak. So I mean, if we have to wait a little more, that's okay. I throw it out there. Should we be looking at a different brand like the police department did? Just to, is the Silverado the way to go? I don't know. Do we get a Jeep like Craig?
All Jeeps? No, the main reason I, I, I went with Ford, just they're an excellent work truck in my opinion. And, and we have other Fords. So when I can, if I can stock up on, on filters. Everything's kind of standardized. So.
Think if you, if you went back to somebody now to try to get the truck like a Silverado, you'd probably be hard pressed to find anything.
It'd work.
I mean, the other thing is, is checking area dealers and trying to buy something off the lot. And then having it kind of piecemeal, like having it outfitted, you know, hire somebody to come in, put the lights in or have that, that may end up adding to the costs significantly. So I'm going to keep trying with them and I have some better news next time.
Right. But the good thing, A, the money's encumbered. We have the money and B, it's not affecting your operation right now, the delay, because we did have that. So that's good. All right. Anything else? Any other questions for Mark from the board?
Thank you. Thank you, Graham.
Okay, back to the agenda. Okay, we have some one-day permits. Hey, we have some uh one-day permits.
A few permits. Um, the first one is we have a border health permit um to operate a residential kitchen establishment for Honey Bear Tea at fifteen Baldwin Drive. They want to operate a residential kitchen establishment.
This is the one we discussed, uh, we discussed this last meeting.
Yeah, they're here. Yeah, they're, yeah, they're here.
Okay.
Um, Finn McCool has been out there, he inspected the property.
Yes.
And premises, gave it a passing grade. I think he did a water test too and everything came back. So as as far as border health concerns, they've, they've met all the requirements needed here.
And you got the whole act of the superment.
Yeah, I went to the planning board back in March. Um, I went to add biscotti to what I was selling. So I'm meeting with the planning board just to add that item on Wednesday.
Mostly mail order or?
Yeah, I like to do farmer's markets and then um I have an online store.
Have you done the farmer's market here down?
No, I haven't done that one, yeah.
I think they do the one at church too, right?
The Memorial Day.
The Memorial Day across the street, yeah.
How's it going?
So far, so good. I haven't been able to do anything the last two weeks, um, but hopefully I can get going again, but that's not helpful.
Well, we'll see you on Shark Tank one of these days.
Keep it low profile, maybe.
I move approval of the permit for Honey Bear Tea.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye. Congratulations.
We'll plan it right now.
And then we just got John, you guys sign this when you, when you get a minute. And then we have some one-day permits here too. Thank you, guys. So Senior Center has.
Oh, these are the correct, these are the corrected date ones, right, Craig?
According to Pam, just everything's correct, right? So we have Saturday, October twenty-second, Skid River Artists Art Show reception from twelve to four, sale of wine beverages allowed in here, it's chapter one thirty-eight, chapter fourteen. Um, the same request for October twenty-third, Sunday, October twenty-third, from twelve to four. And then they have a request for Thursday, October twenty-seventh, for an annual retirement planning seminar for a sale of wine and beer beverages.
Alright. Can I get a motion to approve these permits?
I'll move approval of the permits uh at the Hampden Senior Center for October twenty-second, October twenty-third and October twenty-seventh as
Craig, second.
Is the border health one or do you have to, oh, second, yeah. Motion in a second, yeah, you're good.
All in favor? Aye.
And then we got a VFW um sale of alcohol Saturday, August twentieth, from twelve noon until twelve midnight at the VFW Pavilion. They have that was for a birthday party, a retirement party, Sunday, August twenty-first, twelve noon to six P M, the VFW Pavilion. And then uh sale of alcohol for Jack and Jill, Saturday, October, August twenty-seventh, twelve noon to twelve P M, the VFW Pavilion.
So the thirtieth birthday people can go twelve hours, but the retirees can only make it six? Is that what they're saying, Don?
I think so. There must be some type of limitation there, yeah.
Alright, so uh I move approval of the one-day permits that the veterans are formed worse for August twen- uh, Saturday, August twentieth, twenty twenty-two. Sunday, August twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, and Saturday, August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two.
Second. Second. All in favor? Hey, so we now have, any correspondence, Bob?
Uh, no.
Alright. Okay, and Select Room reports. So I reported on the Housing Authority meeting. Um, again, things are going well over there. They have a huge waiting list as always, uh, and on, Dan, what's typically forty, fifty people, I believe, something like that now, you know, so. Uh, things are in good shape. Planning Board meets this week. Uh, Senior Center is moderning right along. Craig?
Um, Skinning Valley Water District is meeting on Thursday this week. I think that's it as far as boards. Um, I do want to bring up though that I was contacted by a couple residents in the three hundred block of Chapin Road who have been having frequent power issues, brownouts, different parts of our house going without power. Um, they've had electricians look at it and it's been determined that there's an issue with the feed lines um coming into their house. Um, they've been in contact with National Grid and they did a transformer upgrade last week from a twenty-five kilovolt to a fifty kilovolt transformer. Um, as of yesterday, they're still having issues with the new transformer. And I was told the line technician came out, measured voltage at the house from the line and reports that it's under voltage for what's required. You know, based on conversation back and forth, they seem to think that there's um lines are undersized on Chapin, so. Um, I'd like as a board that we could invite uh National Grid into our next meeting on the twenty-second, just to kind of get an update of what they plan on doing with the infrastructure on Chapin Road for these residents, as well as, you know, we have the new developments going in there. You know, wha- what is National Grid's plan for upgrading the road? Is there really an issue? Is there another issue that we underlying somewhere, you know, maybe we can just get them to report on the overall condition of the infrastructure and, you know, how they see fit going forward.
Appreciate that. Craig brought this up as well, and I reached out to uh Ron DeCorzio, the General Manager of the Mass- Massachusetts Municipal Wholesale Electric Company, who was reaching out to his compatriot over at uh the grid to get in contact with Bob as well, echoing Craig's comment, can we get somebody to come to our meeting? What I mentioned to the planning board was they have plans in front of them for seven new houses on Chapin Road. And just like Craig said, I mean, if the line's already too weak for the existing structures there, what's it gonna do when you put seven more houses online? So I think it'd be prudent, like Craig said, what's your plan going forward? Do you guys have upgrades for things like this? And why isn't the town informed? So, Bob, again, same thing, if uh maybe you hear from that chap or I'll give you Ron's number and see if you can get somebody to come in and answer Craig's, answer Craig's questions. Don? Okay, okay, Don, Don Minister, your report.
Uh, I forgot about one thing. Um, I got an email today from Gina Khan that they're looking to convene the Strategic Planning Committee at the end of the month, just to finalize some loose ends with Mars Consultants on the new strategic plan. That's all the info I have, there's really nothing else there.
Okay, Bob, did we leave you anything for your report?
We've been over much of this. Uh, what we haven't talked about, I've been in touch with Attorney Weinberg and Town Council regarding the uh grievance that we're uh facing now, and I think we're moving along with that. The rest of the meetings I've had, uh, I think we pretty much talked about them, particularly the Shared Conservation uh Committee Group, which is, I I think, coming to an end. Uh, and I have been working with uh boards and committees to make sure that they understand the new rules uh for posting and also getting accounts uh on the town website for those who will be doing the posting and also providing some assistance to them. And kind of learning the system, not complicated or hard, but there are a number of steps that you got to follow to to do the postings and so forth. Uh, I have not been in touch with the town moderator because I know there are some issues that he's facing over there. But a- at the bottom of my report, you'll see the list of potential members of the Government Study Committee. Uh, these are members that, uh, these are names that have been suggested by members of the board, by Mr. Green himself, and I added a few as well, so I'm gonna be in touch with him whenever he's uh able to uh to uh get back in public life, uh, to uh get the committee formed and to get it underway.
Okay, thank you. We make it so much easier on you because we cover half your stuff in our regular meeting. Yeah. I think everybody's pretty aware of what uh Bob has shared with the, with the board, any communications from Jesse? And I don't think there's any need at this point, but there may be need. I would think at the first meeting in September, if there's closure on any action from the courts, we might have a discussion time then. Although there've been requests, if the courts take action on summary judgment requests, things like that. We'll have an opportunity to discuss them, probably first meeting in September, everything, Bob?
I think that would be good timing for an exec session.
Other than that, it's out of our hands, so. Any other business to come before the board?
What was it doing, June? Second?
All those in favor? That was so quick, nice. Thank you all, have a good week, two weeks.
Take care, June.